Good evening and welcome to the December Work Session of the Cabarrus County Board of Education. And this is that one time each year where I open the meeting and we'll open the floor at this time for nominations for our Board Chair.
Dr. Shepherd, I wanted to say that, you know, for the last two years, Mr. Kiger has served this board as our Vice Chair, served me well as my Vice Chair. And I've seen a lot of dedication in Blake, commitment to education, devoted to what he does. And with that being said, I could make a whole long list, you know, of the way I feel like, you know, that Blake has earned this position. And so with that, I'd like to nominate Mr. Kiger as our Board Chair for next year.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for Board Chair?
I'd like to second the nomination of Blake Kiger. I greatly admire his integrity and his breadth of knowledge and experience and his wisdom that he brings to the post. So I do nominate or second the nomination for Blake Kiger.
Is there a motion to close the floor for nominations?
So moved.
Is there?
I'll second.
Second. And so I have one nomination for Blake Kiger and I have a second. So all in favor of Blake Kiger as Board Chair, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Kiger, it's all yours, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. Thank you, Board. I appreciate the vote of confidence and I look forward to working with each and every one of you for the next year. And we'll have a good year and do the work for, the best we can for our school system. The next item of business is to elect a Vice Chair and I'd like to open the floor for nominations for Board Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Barry Shoemaker for Vice Chair.
We have a nomination for Mr. Shoemaker for Vice Chair?
I second that.
And we have a second. Are there any other names for nomination? Hearing none, we will proceed and vote for Barry Shoemaker to be the Board Vice Chair. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Fantastic. Mr. Shoemaker, I look forward to working with you. And with that, we're going to, my first action is chair is going to deviate from the agenda. How about that? The City of Concord lost a dedicated public servant this week and we wanted to just take one moment to recognize Dr. Hector Henry and his service, not only to the City of Concord, but to Cabarrus County School System. And Mr. Walter attended the funeral today and found out a couple of things that we thought would be worth sharing and then we're going to take one moment of silence.
Yes, I attended the funeral today and they gave some wonderful stories about the service of Dr. Henry. Not only was he a decorated vet, he was also participated with our schools. He was the, what was it, the team doctor for Concord High School for many, many years. And he, I think he, the stories that were told today that he brought some, enhanced the physicals that are given to our kids. Not only did they get a regular physical, but he brought in specialists, all for free for our kids. It just showed the dedication that he had for serving and just his passion for children. And it was really an honor to be there.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. And it takes a lot of people doing a lot of different things to help our school system out and these coaches and doctors and trainers, they do a lot and we certainly do appreciate it. And if you will kindly join me in a moment of silence for Dr. Henry. Thank you. Okay. Our next order of business will be to set the agenda. Do I have a motion to accept, to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The motion, the agenda has been adopted and we'll move right to reports and ask Ms. Kelly Klutz. She's been here before, she knows exactly when to get to the podium. Ms. Klutz, we'll go to 4.01, our QSCB Financial Update.
Good afternoon and I'm hoping this will be the last QSCB financial report that I'll be able to provide for you. If you look to the far right of the report, it says balance remaining. There's nothing in that column. We have everything allocated and appropriated and has a purpose. If you look over further to the left, you'll see request, requested budget amendment. Later in the day in the budget amendments, I have the budget amendments listed in this column for you where there were two projects that had dollars remaining. One was the Central Cabarrus Windows and Doors had $8,501 left and also the breaker panel project had $5,334 remaining. And we're asking you later in a budget amendment to move $2,943 to the Northwest Project to help with that paving and also $10,892 of those dollars to the Bowler Project at Mount Pleasant High for those controls. So we do have a formal budget amendment later, but I'll certainly answer any questions that you have at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Klutz. I tell you, instead of going down the line, this is the last one and we talked about this quite a bit and we have more coming up. Does anybody have any specific comments on this portion of the report? Okay. Great. I think we can move on to the milestone report.
Thank you.
Good evening. Let Kelly bring that up. And a little bit different from Kelly, I'm not quite at the end of my discussions about these projects, but we're nearing that fact. I think as you go down the list, you'll see that Central Cabarrus, as we've talked about in the past, that project is complete. We've done all the punchless items. We are just working with our attorneys now to finalize a letter that will be going to the surety that basically describes after expenses, what funds they will be receiving in payment and then be simply a disbursement of the funds via a two-party check. So that will be accomplished in the next few weeks. The Northwest Cabarrus High School Gym, again, the building is done. There are some minor punchless items that are being worked on right now. And then we're doing a rather massive repaving project in front of the gymnasium and that work literally began this morning. So we were hopeful that we're going to, at least with the amount of work that we have to do to remove some of the old materials, we hope we get that work done by this, before the rain comes this week. And then after the rain leaves, we'll go back in and finish the new stone going in and the paving work that will be done as a finished coat. So we don't anticipate that taking a long period of time, but it will depend a lot on the weather and what they have to work around before they accomplish it. But I would say within the next two to three weeks, they should be complete on that work. On Mount Pleasant High School, the boiler replacements, that work is complete, the boiler's operational. The only thing that we're buying at this point, we had control panels that we talked to you about past reports. These control panels, they're very dated, they're the age of the building, can't get parts for them, so we are in the process of replacing those. And we've just issued purchase orders for that work to be done. The Concord High School Gym, again, that work is basically complete. The one thing that remains is there's, as Kelly's report showed, approximately $11,460. We are going to be using that money for a protective mat flooring for the space. We originally talked about using the old flooring, but when we actually took a very close look at the flooring, a lot of it was compressed to the point of not being safe. It wasn't going to be usable. It's because of many years of wear and tear on that. So we'll use that flooring in other places for other things. But the new building will be getting a new floor pretty much throughout the weightlifting area itself. And that will expend the remaining funds in that project. The roof replacement work at J.N. Freeze also began last Friday. They worked through the weekend and so they're ongoing with an attempt to finish as soon as possible. Again, the rain will slow them, of course, but this is a good work crew and they know what they're doing, so we expect good results and hopefully by the middle to end of December, we shall have the roof back on that project and be complete. So other than that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Right. Thank you, Lynn. Board members, any comments on the milestone report? Go ahead, Mr. Walter.
Just a quick, Tommy, you have a substantial complete date of 12-1, so that's got to be moved, is that right?
It depends a little, well, certainly.
Oh, yeah.
Again, these are pre, the date says that we submitted on 11-14, but we actually did submit it about a week earlier than that. So, you know, it's about a month old by the time we're looking at it here. And as I mentioned, we are ahead of that. We started the work, but the delays due to weather and previous commitments of the contractor, we'll probably push that date out to at least the 15th.
Okay. So you'll change that. It's also said 40% for the last three months, is that?
Yes, we'll be changing that now, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Any other comments on the milestone report? Mr. Shoemaker?
On the panels that you're replacing, how long do you anticipate that portion to take?
It's, we had a tentative delivery date of late December, early January, depending on, shipping is sometimes difficult during this time of year. And so they're saying as soon as they get the panels, they will install. And I shouldn't think that it would take more than a day per panel to get everything done, to change out done. But we're looking for completion sometime in January.
And will they be without heat at any point in time or will there have to be weekend work to do the tie-ins on the panels?
I don't think so. We would probably suggest that they do it at the end of the school day and get the work during the second shift for that day. It didn't sound like it was going to be, matter of fact, I will say that we were running the boilers without controls for a period of time as well. If we have, you know, it's not, you're spending energy when you do that, but if you have to do that, you can and just take the controls literally offline for a short period of time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Dr. Phillips?
It's really more an observation, Lynn, than a question and it's just, you know, for instance, you have $11 million worth of projects here, it was 11.1 million. There's essentially no overruns. There were more than 50 opportunities to have overruns. And I particularly point to the Northwest Gym Project, which was the largest one. You were dealing with a massive renovation of a facility that was, what, 50 years old?
Yes.
And sometimes when you open up things that are 50 years old, you get surprises.
You can, yes, indeed.
And so I just want to congratulate you and your staff on putting enough, having enough knowledge to put in enough cushion in the contingencies and to ride herd on all these projects to get them done and within budget. So congratulations to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir.
Yes, I'd like to echo that same sentiment. So, well done and I'm sure that you'll be happy to move on and give some other kind of report in the future instead of the same sheet of paper.
Absolutely right.
Okay. Fantastic. Board members, we'll move on to 4.03, Teacher Leadership Report. We will welcome Ms. Kathy Auger, Dr. Adam Auerbach, Ms. Michelle Klein, Dr. Marion Bish, Ms. Casey Campbell, and Ms. Amy Hicks to the podium.
Good evening. Tonight I have with me a team of administrators and teachers who are excited to share with you details of our Cabarrus County Schools Teacher Leader Program. Different demands in the 21st century have resulted in school leadership, which is shared with teachers, who bring innovative ideas and practical knowledge to drive progress at the classroom, school, and district levels. As John Maxwell, a significant authority on leadership states, "Leadership is not about titles, positions, or flow charts. It is about one life influencing another." The development team of the Cabarrus County Schools Teacher Leader Program, which began work about one year ago, includes Teresa Abernathy, Lisa Ash, Adam Auerbach, Kathy Auger, Marion Bish, Michelle Klein, Beth Cobb, and Mary Newsome. This evening, Adam, Marion, and Michelle, along with two of our teacher leaders, Casey Campbell and Amy Hicks, will share with you program information and relay to you the synergy and collaboration we are experiencing through our work. Charlotte Danielson, an expert on teacher quality, states, "The term 'teacher leadership' refers to that set of skills demonstrated by teachers who continue to teach students but also have an influence that extends beyond their own classroom to others within their school and elsewhere. It entails mobilizing and energizing others with the goal of improving the school's performance of critical responsibilities related to teaching and learning." Next, Adam Auerbach, Principal of Wolf Meadow Elementary and one of our teacher leader instructors, will give you an overview of the program. After Adam, we'll have Marion Bish Personnel Director describing the skills and content taught. Michelle Klein, Principal of Hickory Ridge High School, will then join with some of our teacher leaders, speaking virtually and in person, sharing reflections on their experiences. And I'd like to invite Adam to come up here next.
Thank you for having us tonight. Basically, the program is a two-year program and the goal is to extend the learning of the teachers and leaders within the school building. These are not all classroom teachers, they come from all different parts of the school. There's classroom teachers, technology facilitators, coaches, all kinds of people throughout the school. It allows them to explore leadership options while still teaching or being a lead teacher, et cetera, but outside of what their comfort zone is. So, technology people are doing curriculum things, curriculum people are doing other things. It allows them to practice the new skills within the school environment and all the people that participate and go through the two years will get three CEUs upon completion of the program. How we selected the people to get in there and the requirements that go along with that, it is a two-year commitment to the program, so they had to sign up and stay there. Also with that, they're waiving the option of taking a lateral transfer to another school or, you know, obviously if they leave the district, they don't get to stay in the program, but they can't go to another school unless they do get a promotion, which was understandable. They come to the meetings, there's two sessions per semester and the sessions are offered either at night or on the Saturdays, so that way it's flexible for them. They also accept the requirement to fulfill school-based leadership roles. So, we kind of joke, it's not just covering sports and athletic duties at the high school, there's a lot of other leadership things that they can do. And then completing the assignments, the reading, and that goes along with them being an active participant in the sessions. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Bish to talk a little more.
Thank you for letting us share this. This is an exciting project, probably one of my favorites. My role is to share with you, what are we doing with them for two years? We've asked these folks for two years of commitment, so what are we doing? We built this using a framework called Teacher Leadership Skills Framework. It came from the Center for Strengthening the Teaching Profession. And the research that comes out of this is from some of the best-known names in education, including Linda Darling-Hammond, which is very familiar to all of us as educators. And they looked at knowledge and skills, dispositions, and opportunities to be teacher leaders. So, the disposition comes from their willingness to participate and their selection. The opportunities will come through activities they do and so the role of the program is to give them the skills and the knowledge for leadership. So as you see here, this is a model to show you what year one looks like. In the spring of year one, we cover with our teacher leaders the introduction to the framework and we give them an overview of that. And then the module itself, we call each of these six a module, is built around the text, Monday Morning Leadership. This also aligns to our teacher evaluation instruments, so that we are also building capacity in something that's deemed very important for our teachers. And it all relates to Standard One, which is leadership. And so in the spring with the overview, Dr. Auerbach, Ms. Klein, as well as a couple of other of our administrators handle this module with our folks and they teach Monday Morning Leadership as a very interactive, none of this is sit and get. It's fun to watch all of the activity. Then in the summer, the teachers will attend for two days, a study of best practices in implementing standards-based learning. That is handled through Lisa Ash and the Curriculum and Instruction Department and it is built around how do we implement best practices in the classroom. So we're focusing still on the classroom. They also at that first summer write a leadership development plan, an action plan, with an administrator at their school, that's part of the summer module. And this still continues to relate to leadership in the classroom. We're still building that teacher's capacity in the classroom. In the fall of the first year, we begin to kind of move the group a little bit and we begin to look at part of the framework that deals with working with adult learners. So across the top of here, what you're seeing is the overview and then one of the skills from the framework is knowledge of content and pedagogy, which is handled there with best practices. Then the third, the second skill is working with adult learners and in the fall, we do an entire module on adult learners and how to know more about yourself and then other people. We use a text on adult learning designed specifically for schools. And we then are moving our teachers to Standard One-B, which is leadership in the school. We begin to pull them out of the classroom mindset and paradigm and get them to think school-wide when we do that. As we move into year two with our group, in the spring, there is a two-day training on Crucial Conversations. This will be taught by in-house trainers, there are five within our system, who have received this training and will deploy this to the teacher leaders. And again, we're working on Standard One-B and we're working in the framework on the skill of communication. So Crucial Conversations goes very clearly to that. In the summer of the second year, we work on collaborative work skill coming out of the framework and they participate in three days of facilitative leadership training, which is led by Donna Smith and one of our retired principals, Kathy Hyatt. And again, we're working on leading in the school, but that summer work with facilitative leadership, we begin to pull that paradigm out a little further and trying to get them to think beyond the school. And so the last of the modules in the fall of the second year is Trigo Decision Making, where we want them to think in terms of system thinking, the final skill in the framework, and then also moves them to the evaluation point of leading in the profession. So we're moving them from the classroom to the school, to the profession, while moving them through five different skills in the framework and also leading them through developing their skills. I would share with you that we have 75 teachers in this program. And as we move forward, it is our goal to hopefully keep that going. So this is what the teachers are learning and why those modules were chosen. And they are taught by leaders around the district, some central office, some school-based, but a variety of leadership and leadership styles coming to these teachers as they learn.
And good evening. And I'm very fortunate that I get to talk about what I think is the very best part of this program, which is the people that are involved in it. So, first of all, I think that when I got involved in this, it was a complete accident. I heard, you know, Kathy Auger talking about teacher leadership and I said, "I want to know more about this." So, I was invited to this meeting and from the very first moment that the six of us were together in a room, we knew there was this synergy and just this power that was going to happen there, of the fact that we all had a common goal of wanting really to empower our teachers and to build the capacity within our schools. And I have been so impressed at every meeting, at just where we have gone with these things. So, I think we have great people who are, you know, setting up what this program has become. And I think that we have really good leaders who are instructing our programs, the ones that we have done. And we decided from the very beginning that we did not want this to be your standard, average, professional development, we wanted this to be different. We asked these teachers to come in on the afternoon, sometimes from four to eight. It's a long day for our teachers, some of who have been at work since, you know, six o'clock or 6:30. Or they have the option sometimes to come from eight to 12 on Saturdays, also makes for a long day. So we decided we wanted to make it the most, you know, energetic and engaging situation that it could possibly be. And we wanted to model best practices with everything that we have done. From all the feedback that we have received from them, that is exactly what we have been able to do and what we hope to continue, so that not only are they building their skills to be leaders, they're also building those skills with working in their own classrooms and things like that. One of the things that we have had them work with a great deal, that they were a little reluctant at the very beginning, but have just become champs in the end, is role-playing. We have them do a lot of that. And sometimes it's one of those situations where in order to be able to have those difficult conversations with people, you have to actually be able to put yourself in that situation. So, we've had a lot of fun with those kind of situations. But the very best part about this program are the teacher leaders who were selected by their administrators. As I said, you know, when we came to lead some of these sessions, you know, it's four o'clock in the afternoon, you're feeling a little tired. Within five minutes of being in the room with this group of teachers, there is no way that you can be tired. You are automatically energized because of what they bring to the table, because of the rich discussions that they have with each other. It just truly is, it's one of the most exciting groups of people that I've been in in education in my 17 years, so I've been real excited about that. So I want to let you hear from a few of them personally. So, we have a few people you're going to hear from virtually and then we actually have some real people. So our first virtual participant is Lori Taylor and she is from Cox Mill Elementary.
I'm a teacher at Cox Mill Elementary and I'm currently in the Teacher Leadership Program. I really enjoy the program because it's taught me to think outside of the classroom, that I can actually impact more children by helping other teachers in other areas, showing them my strengths and what I can do to help them. In the program, we've learned how to help the adult learners, how to give them tips that are appropriate for them, where they'll actually take the most from it and then give it to their students. So really in this program, I've learned to help more than just 23 students in my classroom. Thanks.
And my name is Denise Yates and I'm the Technology Facilitator at J.N. Robinson High School. I feel very privileged to have been a part of the Cabarrus County Schools' first leadership teacher cohort this year. It's really given me an opportunity to grow professionally. I've decided through the course of this year to go back and start my administrative add-on and work towards that degree. It's also given me an opportunity to work with other teacher leaders and administrators in the county. And it's just really nice to work with people who have that shared vision and common goal for students and other leaders in our county. So I would highly recommend any teachers who are teacher leaders within the school or just want to be more empowered within their school, to take advantage of going through this cohort, because it really gives them a good opportunity to grow professionally.
Hello, this is Paula Schreiber. I am the Technology Facilitator at Wolf Meadow Elementary School. I just wanted to share some of my thoughts about the Teacher Leader Cohort that I've been participating in this past year. I've really had an awesome opportunity to collaborate and work with all the great teachers across the county. It's been interesting to see the similarities and differences that high school teachers and middle school teachers and elementary teachers experience. We've had some wonderful sessions together where we get to role-play situations that teacher leaders may find themselves in from time to time. And we just recently finished up a session on adult learners, which I really enjoyed thoroughly. I found out I'm a blue person, so I tend to have that people person, I'm talkative, I like to find out about people and learn about people. I like interacting with others and I'm kind of like that rescuer counselor type. I'm there for people when they have problems or when they just need to talk. So that's kind of helped me see where my area is of expertise and where I'm comfortable. And it also allowed me to see other personalities, like the orange person who's loud and boisterous and the gold person who's very organized. So it's just been interesting to see the different personalities that we all work with and it helps us to relate better to one another. Through this Teacher Leader Cohort, I have also decided that I'm probably going to go into administrative, get that certification added on to my certificate. I haven't started yet, but I plan probably in the spring or summer to start classes. So I hope you get the opportunity to participate in this program, it's an awesome program, we have a lot of fun and the readings are awesome and the people, the mentors are terrific. I hope you get to try it out. Thanks.
Hi, my name is David James. I'm a seventh grade social studies teacher at Harold Winkler Middle School. I've had the opportunity to participate in the Teachers Leaders Cohort through Cabarrus County Schools. It has given me an opportunity to learn and to meet and to network with many colleagues throughout the county. It's also given me an opportunity to improve in my teaching and instruction in the classroom. It's also given me an opportunity to improve in my teaching and instruction in the classroom.
Hi, Mr. James. That lesson yesterday was awesome.
Thank you very much. It's also given me the opportunity to work with many colleagues and learn about their different personalities.
Mr. James, oh my goodness! Oh, are you doing something important?
Give me one second.
Okay.
How to effectively communicate with my colleagues and be a teacher leader in my school building. She's an orange and that's okay.
And I'd also like to welcome, we actually have two teachers here that are going to speak to you personally. And the first one is going to be Casey Campbell. And Casey is a teacher at Cox Mill High School.
Good evening. I'm an English teacher at Cox Mill High School. This is my eighth year teaching. All eight years have been with Cabarrus County Schools. During this time of teaching, I've had many leader hats is what I call them. Currently, I'm a co-chair of my English department, the lead mentor, I'm a mentor, I'm the yearbook advisor, and I'm a teacher, which is probably the most important leader role that I have. I love each of these responsibilities because it allows me to connect to everyone from the students to administration. However, it wasn't until the Teacher Leaders Program that I was able to connect to other leaders in Cabarrus County. And so a lot of what I'm pulling from is actually from our first book that we studied, Monday Morning Leadership. And Jeff is getting some leadership advice from Tony, a successful semi-retired business leader who spent his time writing books and coaching top executives. But one of the quotes that stood out to me was, he said, "When it comes to leading people, there's no problem that is unique to you." And that is true. And that's one of the things that this Teacher Leaders Program has helped me with, is in speaking with other teacher leaders, you see how you can share the experiences that you've had and help each other out. What makes the program wonderful is the open collaboration. As a teacher and a leader, I always want to give more of myself to my students and to my peers. The questions that most teacher leaders have is, "What can I do? How can I do more?" And that kind of leads back to Monday Morning Leadership when we talk about this bucket feeling idea and that we all have this bucket and there are dippers that pull things out of them. And each thing that we give of ourselves, that's a dipper pulling things out of the bucket. But we need to fill our buckets as well. And so we're doing that at our schools with our other teachers. But the Teacher Leaders Program is the one thing that's pouring back into us. It's almost like a selfish pleasure that we have a moment to learn. So things that we've done at our school, our staff board, I was able to represent my colleagues and our community walk-in at our school. And my peers are using me as a liaison with administration. And it's so humbling that they come to me with concerns, knowing that I will bring it to administration. And administration as well, it's very humbling to come to me and see what concerns that our teachers are having. Personally, teacher, it gives back to our teacher leaders and it is by far the best professional development that I've had in Cabarrus County. What makes it great? It allows me time to reflect. It's provided me with a professional learning community of leaders. It's allowed me to connect to my fellow department chairs, provided me with the tools needed to be an effective leader. A lot of times we want to solve everyone's problems, but I've learned to start asking questions. And what makes it so fantastic is from our adult learners thing, this was a choice that we made and a commitment that we made. And that affects the development, like the professional development severely because it's a serious commitment that all the teachers have made to the program. So to end with a quote as well, it says, "For you to be the very best, you cannot allow yourself to become complacent in your comfort zone. You need to be reaching for improvement. To fulfill your potential, you need to move out of your comfort zone and into the learning zone." So this program has brought countless other teachers and me back into the learning zone. So future goals, I see myself continuing with the Teacher Leader Program and also possibly jumping even further out of my comfort zone and pursuing administration. Thank you so much for this wonderful opportunity. And then Ms. Amy Hicks.
Who is a Bible teacher at Central Cabarrus High School. I wish I could say I was in my eighth year. I'm in my 28th year as a teacher. So I represent the elder population of teachers tonight. You know, I guess as a Bible teacher, I could just say amen to a lot of things that I've heard tonight. It was very interesting for me because when I was first approached about becoming a part of this program, I don't know that I really received the great layout that I have heard tonight from the people who were behind this on the planning committee. But I have to tell all of you that everything that you said you hoped you would accomplish being through this first year has happened for us. And I think that's what you hear from different teachers. When I was first trying to consider this, I was thinking, "Lordy, I don't need one more thing to sign on to and this is a big commitment and I will be very committed to whatever I get involved in." But I have to tell you that my hesitation would have just disintegrated had I been standing where I am tonight looking backwards because it has been incredibly beneficial thing to me as a teacher. Two unexpected things that I've heard multiple people say tonight, unexpected surprises in this program. One was just the wonderful opportunity it was to collaborate with other people around the county, people who are leaders in their schools as well. I can't think of anything better in a county system of pulling together ideas and thoughts than this particular program. The excitement level that has been there, the collaboration, which is something we've been working on for a while, has just been tremendous. And it goes across age barriers, as you see as I stand here, as well as elementary, middle school, and high school. It's been fantastic. The other unexpected surprise for me was just what a benefit it was to work with some of the mentors who are working with us in this program. We have worked with county office people as well as other administrators in the school and, you know, just building that trust and respect across the county and being able to hear ideas that they have, being able to see things modeled for us that we are trying to do every day in our classroom as well. Totally unexpected. Didn't know that was going to be a part of it. Didn't realize how collaborative, how interactive it was going to be and really, to be honest with you, how much fun it was going to be. For me personally, it has expanded my comfort zone. That was one of the goals. It has. I think for myself, I'm kind of a behind-the-scenes person. I think you lead by example. But what this has caused me to do is to begin to see beyond that role and begin to see how are ways that I can take the experience that I've had in the classroom for all these years, how can I take that and push that forward for the betterment of our school? How can I have an influence that direction? And, you know, our skills have been given to us, as you saw in the first year, about best practices as a teacher, but also in how do we work with our teachers within our building and the other administrators to help make our school a better place. There are four teachers from my school who have been a part of this program. And I can't tell you the amount of camaraderie that we have built through this and how it has helped us even in looking at our own school. In fact, one of the teachers, I asked her, I said, "What would you say had been a benefit for her?" She said, "I really feel like I've become a better teacher as a result of some of the things that I've learned." The other person said, in reflecting on our recent training about working with adults, she said, "I really feel like it has pushed me to see beyond my own point of view to other people's points of view and respect that and learn to work with that and bring unity." So as I stand before you tonight, I can tell you that if I had known then what I know now, I wouldn't have hesitated at all at being a part of this program. It has been a tremendous gain for me, even though it's required a lot of me as well. And so very grateful to be a part of this and appreciate you guys letting me share with you tonight about how it's been meaningful for us. Thank you. By the way, I have to say, I am not pursuing an administrative degree. Just to let you know. And there are other teachers that are in that same boat. I think that's important to know, that there are teachers who really love to be in the classroom or not looking to go somewhere else, but are looking to expand what we're doing as well. So I represent that side as well. Thank you. Sorry. I apologize.
I want to say thank you to the members of our development team and our teacher leaders tonight for sharing their adventures in leadership with you. And we're very excited to be going into the second year of this program with our first cohort. And we are beginning a new cohort this spring with another 75 to 80 teacher leaders. And do you have any questions for any member of the group or any comments?
Wow, what a great presentation and a great program. We appreciate you taking the time to be here. You guys are really the leaders of the leaders and that means you're very special to this board and our school system. And we appreciate all that hard work and effort and very happy to hear that it's paying off. You're getting dividends, it sounds like, in a really, really big way. So we will just, I guess anybody want to make a comment? We'll start with Dr. Phillips, sir.
I'm impressed and I'm glad to hear that we have some counselor rescuers in our system.
I do have to make a confession here. I've been going through the DTs for about the last year and a half and had been teaching just one class at Central Piedmont at night in English for about 20 years. And sometimes I look at our stuff here and cross to my fellow board members and sometimes think, "I'd rather be teaching." But it was a great experience and I can tell from this presentation and what you're saying here that the value of this to my peers on the board is that it invigorates and energizes the morale of the teachers and gives them an opportunity to share with their peers what they know in the back of their minds and give to the students all day long, but which they need an opportunity to share with each other so it becomes more crystal clear and so they more directly understand what they're giving all day long. The bucket analogy was very true because all day long, they're giving, 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 and giving. And this is an opportunity, and apparently in several waves here, this class that I guess is graduating right now, as well as the January group that will begin, it's an opportunity for them to give to each other. It's like two plus two equaling three is really what's going on when this type of group and this type of program can come together. So I admire you all.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Schu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can't see anything better that we're doing right now for teacher advancement. You know, it's just amazing to me, you know, that, who thought this up, by the way? Is this Ms. Augers' brainstorm or is this, what did this come, is this a state initiative or is it Cabarrus County?
It was a local initiative. I mean, it was a lot of people. We had started talking about it and then Lisa Ash in Curriculum and Instruction started talking about it. And then when we mentioned possibly doing a Teacher Leader Program, I didn't have to ask for people to be on the committee. People just called me and said, "Oh, I'm so interested in that. Can I help?" I mean, really. So we have a great team.
It's a great initiative and this sort of reminds me of, you know, train the trainer and you're passing that on. You're learning more than the everyday skill set to advance not only your knowledge, but the knowledge of the people around you. And I liked what Casey said about we're getting into the learning zone. Just because we're getting older does not mean that we can't learn. We don't stay in a box. You know, we come out of that box and we do continue to learn. And so that's a good thing and I appreciate all the effort everybody's putting into it. And the way that I understand the program is, is that we just did the Cohort One this year and the Cohort Two will start in the spring of 2014. And then when that finishes, then you'll do another Cohort One the next year, Cohort Two, and so forth. Or can they continue on? Is there going to be more than just the Cohort Two?
So we actually, this is a two-year program.
So just one time?
So they have finished, no, and it will continue to renew as our goal. So the people who are in Cohort One have finished one year and they had that second year coming up. And we're going to run simultaneously, start this spring, the next cohort. So we'll have two cohorts running all the time.
Absolutely. So they're actually, you're going to have about 150 teachers involved during it. That's wonderful. Thank you so much. Thanks to all of you.
Mr. Chair, can I correct my own math earlier?
Well, I was still trying to figure out how to put that analogy down.
Again, he was an English major, none of that. But it really is two people's brain power coming together to equal more than two people.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Dr. Shepherd, you had a comment?
Just to respond to Mr. Schu's question about the originality of this, I think you could even share some of the board's vision in this because with succession planning being a goal two or three years ago, preparing people maybe for the next work, but for doing the work that they're doing now even to a higher level, I think you set that vision for us all. I just want to make sure that you're giving credit for that as well.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. Mr. Schumaker.
I just want to tell you, I'm so impressed that you were willing to put aside all that time to participate in this program because I know it was a huge commitment of time, especially two days in the summer when you could have been doing something really nice like paddle boarding or water skiing or something even more enjoyable. But, you know, the leadership program is really interesting because you're going beyond the classroom to the school. And this year, you're going to be going to the district and looking at how can I make a difference in the district and getting the bigger hat on to take a look at things from a different perspective. And I think it's really important that you get that perspective and draw that knowledge in. I don't know if Ms. Klutz has set up her budget committee for this coming year, but, you know, we use the Trigo in part of our budgeting process. And in the past, we've had teachers involved and I think this would be a great feed, this cohort, this particular cohort, the going in and participating with the budget process, at least on some level, so that they can kind of see the global picture of what we're trying to do. And then take it back to the people in the schools that they're working with and all to say, you know, "It's more complex than you ever could believe." But, you know, everyone here really has the children's hearts in our grasp and we want to make sure we have the best leaders. And you guys are doing a great job and I really appreciate the effort that you've put forth in doing this. And Adam and Marion, Michelle, Kathy, all of you and all the people that are teaching. I don't know who's actually doing the leadership, but that's really valuable and I just really appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Ms. Carpenter.
Well, I just want to thank you, the staff that put it together and everyone that had worked with it. But also I want to thank the teachers that put this on their plates because we hear every day thinking about what all the teachers already have on their plate. And the ones that have said, "We want to put this as a top priority or put this as a priority because we know when they put Common Core on, when they put all this on," and then they said, "You know, we feel this as something we want to do because we know this is important." And I just admire them for doing this. How many hours, do you know how many extra hours are put into this program?
Each of the modules is a minimum of eight hours. So we begin with one day, which is eight hours, then two days in the summer. The fall is one day, which is eight hours, evening and Saturday. Then we move to two days. Next summer is three days and then next fall is one day. So when we add it all up, we have three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 full days will have been spent. So we're looking at 80 hours of contact plus their action plan at their school and then the outside reading that they do. We try not to give them a lot of outside reading. We give them resources. The Monday Morning Leadership, the Best Practices Book, they do read. Outside of that, everything is interactive. We only pull them once a semester to do one thing each semester because we're trying to make it interactive and fun, but also we know what they're facing. So when we're done, they have, well, probably approaching a good 100 hours into the program when the two years are completed. And I think I agree with them as one of the instructors, the time flies. We have a lot of fun.
Would you open it up to our board to let us participate with that? We all need extra leadership. So we're always wanting to get educated, but it looks like a wonderful, wonderful program and it sounds like that y'all have really, really enjoyed it. And again, I want to thank you all for your participation and for all the teachers that participated in because we know that your plates are full and we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Walter.
Yeah, again, I echo the comments of the board. I mean, it's about as exciting as the new teacher program that we heard about last year and just things that make us the clear choice and make it a good place to work here at Cabarrus County Schools. I had a couple of questions on, I think it also says something that you had, you say 79 people are still in the program after the first year. So, I mean, that says a lot for how for how valuable the program is for the teachers.
Yes. We started with, I believe it was 83 who accepted the invitation and started. We still have 75. Of the eight, three have moved to assistant principal positions, and therefore felt that the time commitment was just such that they couldn't. A couple have taken leadership positions elsewhere and have taken that opportunity. We had one or two that due to health reasons, but in reality, every person has said, "I hate to have to say no. I'm having to make some tough choices," that they really wanted to remain. So, as we move into Cohort Two, we are seeking two teachers from every school to have 80 as the start point, so that they can work together. As Amy said, it's nice to have them, they become their own little group at the school. So, we will start with 80 on the second group as well.
That actually just answered my other question about the, are all schools represented in that?
Yes. We have given that to our principals and asked that they, and they can backfill. We asked them to keep going until we have two teachers from every school to represent every school in the second cohort. In the first, I think Kathy could speak to that better, we were still learning, and we were still working, and we were still piloting. We have almost all the schools represented in the first, but in the second, we decided it was a commitment that every school would be represented.
So, how do we get teachers into this new, the next cohort?
The principals have an eligibility, and they, we have the brochure, I believe, that you have on your board docs, and they go to people in their school, and they share that brochure, they offer it, and to be really honest, it's become something teachers call us and ask, "How do I get in?", that the word has spread.
Certainly sounds exciting. The only other, the last question I had was related to the comments about this administrative add-on to certificates. Is this similar to an advanced program, degree program?
Yes. Now, do you want to speak to that, Kathy?
I guess my question is related, again, we're trying to move people from within. If we can promote from within, I think that's excellent. Is this considered when we go through that process, or do you actually still need to go through this administrative add-on?
You would still need to go through the administrative add-on. I do think it has inspired a lot of teachers to see that that's an interest area that they have. This also does appear on their teacher evaluation instrument, because this is an example of how they can become involved at a district level in learning about leadership and doing school-based and district-level activities.
Yeah, I think it's outstanding. Thanks for sharing it with us.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Thank you all very, very much for your presentation. I did not catch her name, but the technology facilitator at Wolf Meadow that was in the video. She had a word on the shelf behind her, and I don't know if anybody noticed that, but it's a word that kind of sums up what you guys are doing, and the word was achieve. You guys are trying to achieve something so that you can set the bar for the other teachers and to be the leaders, so that they can achieve the ultimate goal of what we're trying to do, is educate the children of our system to be better citizens and productive citizens when they move on either to the workforce or to college. So, to me, I thought that was pretty apropos, that that word was behind her right shoulder. So, thank you very, very much for being here. And, board members, we will move on to 4.04, Read to Achieve and Summer Reading Camp, and we will welcome Dr. Jason Van Hukel and Dr. Tara Nattress to the podium.
Good evening, members of the board. Tonight, you're going to hear a report on the Read to Achieve legislation from Dr. Nattress. As you know, this is something that affects kindergarten through third grade, but in particular, really affects third grade, so we want to make sure you're fully aware of all the details of the plan and the legislation behind it.
All right. I was figuring out, I had to click and not scroll. I'm with you now. So, I am going to talk a little bit about the Read to Achieve legislation. You've heard bits and pieces of it, and we want to make sure that you have the full overview of what the legislation entails. So, the goal of the Read to Achieve legislation, it is part of the Excellent Public Schools Act, so if you're looking for it in terms of statute, we'll get into that in a little bit, but it is part of the Excellent Public Schools Act. And the goal is to ensure that every student read at or above grade level by the end of third grade. So, that is a goal that we all share in as we look at this, and it's really to ensure that they progress in reading proficiency, so that they can read, comprehend, integrate, and apply complex texts throughout their lives. We keep hearing about college and career readiness. This is something that will help build that component. So, as we look at this, there are seven key components to the legislation, and I'm going to walk you through each of the seven, because they each have different pieces to them. So, one of them is that there's this comprehensive plan for reading achievement. There's also a developmental screening and kindergarten entry assessment component, facilitating early-grade reading proficiency, the elimination of social promotion, successful reading development for retained students, notification requirements to parents and guardians, and accountability measures. So, I'm going to talk through each one of those for just a couple of minutes, so that you have the full breadth of this legislation. So, when you look at this particular diagram, what it's doing is trying to take all of the components and put it into nice, one nice non-linguistic representation. So, you see the grade levels across the top, and then when you look at the purple components, those are the elements that we, as a school district, are required to do. So, you'll notice that kindergarten through fourth grade, there are PEPs, which are Personalized Education Plans. Those are something that are already in place within our schools. So, that's not a new component to this. The other piece right below that are notifications to parents and guardians. So, when a child is working with a PEP, which are for any children who are below grade level, who may be at risk, we notify the parents and guardians. So, that's a process, again, that's already in place. You see, then, under fourth grade, there's this third, fourth transition class or accelerated reading class. So, when we get to the elimination of social promotion, we're going to talk a little bit about what that really means in terms of the students and where they physically go at the end of third grade. Then, you have reading development for retained students. I'm going through the purple pieces at the bottom. You have summer reading camp, which we'll talk about. We need to include a plan for reading at home, once a child has been retained once, and then supplemental tutoring if children are retained twice. Then, you see these pieces in green. The pieces in green are the pieces that are provided to us by the state. So, the tools that we use to implement this legislation include the formative and diagnostic assessments. You've probably heard folks talking about reading 3D in M-class. That's part of this. The kindergarten entry assessment, I'll talk about in just a minute, but that is something else that's another component of this. And then, there is a portfolio component for third graders. So, this just kind of gives you that at-a-glance overview of all of those components that I referenced a moment ago. So, one of the things that I want us to really be cognizant of is that within this legislation, there are three kind of layers to this. You have the statute itself, right? But then, in order to implement the statute, they had to put some pieces in place in terms of state board policy. So, you see the two elements of state board policy there, and then I did give you a link to the guidebook that's at the bottom. So, there are kind of three layers. You've got the statute, then you have the state board policy, and then we have how the Department of Ed, or DPI, is asking that we implement some of these pieces. So, as I talk through some of these components, some of them are directly from the statute, some of them come from the state board policy in response to the statute, and then some of them come from the guidebook that DPI has given us in response to those previous two layers. So, we're actually talking about kind of three different layers as we go through this. So, the first of the seven components is this comprehensive plan for reading achievement. Basically, what this is, is a reading plan for what reading instruction is going to look like across the state. So, some of the key elements are to develop, implement, and continuously evaluate a comprehensive plan to improve reading achievement. It needs to be based, this is the plan that the state is giving us, on reading instructional practices with strong evidence of effectiveness. They want it to be research-based. It needs to include the standard course of study. There are a couple of components there about looking at teacher licensure and teacher education programs. We're not involved in those. Those are higher ed pieces. But as you look at this, they've developed a plan. It is a very lengthy document. Fortunately, when you look at it, we're doing most of those things. Things like our guided reading groups, our balanced literacy blocks, our reading workshop approach, those pieces are all covered in the work that we're doing. So, this particular component doesn't have a huge impact on us as a system. Then, you get into this developing screening and kindergarten entry assessment process, and you're going to see two things here. You have the key components to the Read to Achieve legislation, and then if you look about two-thirds down, there's this Race to the Top Early Learning Challenge Grant. So, that is another piece to this. This one in particular, we will not have until 2014, 15. So, this is not an implementation within this school year. But what this is, it's about having a kindergarten entry assessment, which we already do, but having the same kindergarten entry assessment across the state. And you can see that third bullet, administration of K3 formative assessments that include a process at kindergarten entry that generates a child profile, and it's looking at things similar to what we look at for our pre-K learners, so early literacy, early language, and math, and we need to do that within 30 days of enrollment. So, there is this component for kindergarten entry. Implementation is 2014, 15, and when you look at this Race to the Top Early Learning Challenge Grant, there is another grant that the state received that they're kind of dovetailing with this, so that they're looking at other K3 assessments that measure these other areas, language and literacy, cognition and general knowledge, and that's in development right now. They're going to be doing some piloting of those assessments, but we're looking at some additional pieces in addition to the kindergarten entry assessments. All right? So, that's one of the other components. Then, we get into facilitating early-grade reading proficiency. The two key components of this are that K3 students shall be assessed with valid, reliable, formative, and diagnostic reading assessments. That's the reading 3D piece. So, in August of this year, we trained our teachers on how to use reading 3D, and then they have three windows of time where they're doing these benchmark assessments. They do one at the beginning of the year, they do one at the middle of the year, and they do one at the end of the year. We were already doing benchmark assessments like that, using AIMS Web and using running records, so we've replaced what we were doing with reading 3Ds, so that our teachers weren't duplicating any assessments. This is also the area where progress monitoring comes in. So, teachers are also, for students who are at risk, progress monitoring or assessing them more regularly to get information on their early literacy skills, so things like, are they able to segment words? Can they blend words in addition to their fluency? So, how do they read out loud, and how do they comprehend in their reading? So, as you can see with that second bullet, it's their research on the five big areas of reading, which are phonics, phonemic awareness, fluency, comprehension, and vocabulary. So, the assessments that we're using with reading 3D measure those five areas. So, element number four is this elimination of social promotion. So, when people talk about this one, they're typically talking about this idea of retaining students in third grade if a student fails to demonstrate proficiency on the reading EOG. So, that is the big piece of this one. There are good cause exemptions, and superintendents determine the good cause exemptions. Those are very spelled out in the legislation. So, as you look at this, students who do not pass the EOG when we give it this spring, if they are limited English proficient students with less than two years of instruction in an ESL program, then they are not going to be retained under this legislation. If the student has a disability whose IEP indicates the use of alternative assessments and reading intervention, so they take the Extend One assessment, then they also are exempt from this legislation. What happened? Finally got it, so I wasn't scrolling. That's all right. So, the other piece is students who demonstrate reading proficiency appropriate for third-grade students on an alternative assessment. So, here's what will happen in May slash June. We'll give the EOG to our third-grade students. If our third-grade students are not proficient on the EOG, then we'll look at these five categories and see, do they meet any of those criterion for a good cause exemption? So, if it's an English language learner, they've been in the country for a year, they've been in our program for a year, then they receive a good cause exemption. If they don't meet one of these five criterion, then we give them an alternative assessment. So, the state has developed what they're calling the Read to Achieve Assessment. It's very similar to the EOG, but it's a little bit shorter in terms of the readings are broken up, and then the children answer questions after a part of the reading, then they do another part of the reading and answer questions, and then another part. So, what we will do is they'll take the EOG. If they're not proficient, they don't meet any of these other four areas, then we'll give them the Alternative Read to Achieve Assessment to see if they pass that. So, that's this third area for a good cause exemption. The fourth area is that students who demonstrate through a student reading portfolio, reading proficiency appropriate for third-grade students. So, you saw in that diagram that there's a reading portfolio component where students can demonstrate proficiency that way, and if students have received reading interventions and they've previously been retained more than once, then they are not retained under this legislation. So, then we get into, so what happens for those students who are not proficient on EOGs, they're not proficient on the alternative assessment, then what are the next steps that we take? So, this is the component of summer reading camp. So, students who have not demonstrated proficiency are enrolled in a summer reading camp. That summer reading camp program is for three hours a day, four to five days a week, for six to eight weeks. So, those students are enrolled in the summer reading camp. Retained students are provided with a teacher, so when we look at the teachers for summer school, we are looking for teachers who have a history of demonstrating solid reading instruction, right? We can see that they're making really great gains with their students, and so students enroll in summer camp. At the end of summer camp, they have an opportunity to retake that Read to Achieve Assessment. If they show proficiency on that, then they move on to fourth grade. If they're not proficient at the end of summer camp, as long as they've attended summer camp, they go into a fourth-grade classroom. When they go into that fourth-grade classroom, they go in with a retention label. So, what's actually happening is that the children move on from third to fourth grade, but when they get into fourth grade, they have a retention label, and we're required to give them 90 minutes of uninterrupted reading instruction, which we already do in the majority of our classrooms. So, the students, while they're not physically retained, they have this label to ensure that they continue to receive reading interventions. Then, there's a mid-year promotion opportunity. So, by November 1st, they can demonstrate proficiency by taking that Read to Achieve Assessment again and passing it that time or through their portfolio. If students have that retention label when they are finished with summer camp, then we are required to give them a plan for supporting students at home, which is a good, solid intervention. And students who have been retained twice shall be offered an opportunity for tutoring outside of the school year, and outside of the school day. I'm sorry. So, with all of this, of course, we want to notify parents and guardians, right? So, there is a whole component of the legislation that talks about these requirements. Parents have to be notified in writing that a student shall be retained if they're not demonstrating proficiency by the end of third grade. They are also notified in writing the reason if a student is not eligible for those good cause exemptions. So, those five categories, if they're not eligible, we need to let parents know that they're not. And then, if they have been retained, we are required to provide them with monthly written reports on their child's progress throughout that fourth-grade year. And finally, there are some accountability measures to this. So, every LEA in the state is required to publish to our website and provide a report in writing to the state board on the progress of reading proficiency. So, we will include the percentage of students who are not proficient on the EOG. We will provide information on the percent of students who are not proficient on the alternative assessment, and we will provide information on the number and percentage of students who have that retention label at the end of summer camp. So, we will provide that information. We will also provide information with a description of all of the interventions that we are providing to the students who have that retention label. So, those are the seven components. If you have any questions or comments, I would be happy to answer those.
Great. Thank you, Tara. That's a lot to take in.
It is.
And I know that we've read through it, and now that we've heard the presentation, we'll see, board members, if you have any questions, and we'll start with Dr. Phillips.
First, just an observation. It's nice to see that the Department of Public Instruction made it easy on all of us. Real straightforward. They're retained in third grade, except they're not. They're actually in fourth grade, except I guess they're going to be given third-grade level re... It's nice to see that the Department of Public Instruction made it easy on all of us. Real straightforward. They're retained in third grade, except they're not. They're actually in fourth grade, except I guess they're going to be given third grade level reading instruction in fourth grade until they have a chance for a mid-year promotion, and then maybe they get fourth grade?
They will be taught fourth grade standards. So the idea is that we're also accelerating their progress with that 90-minute block. So we would provide them with reading instruction at their level, but they're also being exposed to and being taught those fourth grade standards. Because at the end of this year, they're also still taking the fourth grade EOG. So it's a mix of both in those classrooms.
But you said that all students get the 90-minute reading block, or... So how is this accelerated?
The components that they have explained in terms of the transitional and accelerated classes are good practices. And we already have a lot of those good practices in place. So I think in some districts, potentially where those practices aren't already a component of what's happening in reading classrooms, it is going to be more of a shift.
I'm still puzzled as to what's changing to make the learning of reading more effective. I just, all I see is a mandate. Everybody's going to be able to read at third grade reading level by the end of third grade. And if they're not, then we're going to say they're not, and they get to go on to fourth grade. And they're going to get the same 90 minutes a day of reading instruction as they have in the past. And somehow we magically expect that at the end of fourth grade, they'll be reading at a fourth grade level, even though they weren't reading at a third grade level at the end of third grade. I'm skeptical, and it's not because of you or the personnel in Cooperris County Schools, but just because you can't mandate, all right, everybody's going to read, and not give us additional resources to allow us and to have a different outcome. But I have some specific questions about this reading camp. Who's going to pay for that?
That will be combined. The state is providing some funding for us. The majority of the funding will come out of local funds. So I believe...
And I assume that we also have to provide, surely we are going to provide transportation to those students.
Yes, so we're currently working on the budget for the summer camps, looking at things like transportation, personnel, materials, all of those pieces. So we're in the development process of the budget right now.
So it's safe to say that this was a partially unfunded mandate from our state legislators?
Yes.
Okay. No other questions?
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. Mr. Harrison?
Well, if we were a factory and had 30,000 parts, and all the parts were the same, it would be easy to move those parts through the factory with some predictability. But with, dealing with 30,000 different people and personalities and learning styles, I suppose you'll present us with the challenges that you encounter in that process in the upcoming years. That being said, it's the law, and we'll do our best to follow the law as the law is described and presented to us. You mentioned in one of the slides that there is some provision for disabilities. Now, I guess my question is, do conditions like dyslexia, attention deficit, any of those, do those rise to the definition of disabilities in this plan? Or how is, how are conditions such as that addressed here as they relate to a child's ability to learn to read proficiently in this plan?
They do rise to the level of disabilities when we talk about learning disabilities in general. What we're looking at here are students who have alternative curriculum. So students who may have a learning disability in reading and have 30 minutes of resource instruction, this good cause exemption does not apply for those students. It applies for students who are typically in a self-contained classroom who are learning an alternative curriculum. So they're not typically working on grade level standards. But students who are working on grade level standards but who may have a disability do not fall under this good cause exemption.
Looking forward to all the data that you'll present to us in the next few years as we move forward with this plan. Thanks for keeping us informed.
Sure.
Mr. Schuh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Nahters, I first of all want to just thank you for an excellent job on the way you explained this legislative, the Read to Achieve legislation. I read it twice, but you just brought it out more clear for me. And I think that it's about time that the State Board of Education gets on board with reading in the public schools, because as Ms. Carpenter has made notes in the past, and all of us have, administration as well, reading is always a top priority because it sets the tone for learning. All learning begins with reading. And so it's about time that the state takes a very strong approach toward helping our kids learn to read at third grade level when they get to the third grade. The only bad thing that I see about this is that it's just another unfunded mandate. I mean, they tell you that you've got to do it, but they don't give you so much money to do it with, which puts the remainder on the back of the county, which is another, you know, obviously, an increase of our budgetary items. When we make our proposal to the commissioners, it just adds to it. But the ultimate objective is to get the children reading at third grade. That's the objective. And obviously, it's going to cost money to do that. But the question that I had, though, one of the questions I had, was about the summer read camp. Is this going to be mandatory, that these students attend this? Or they may, the parents may say, well, I don't care whether my kid reads on the third grade or not, he's going to stay on play all summer.
So if the parent decides that they'd like for their child to stay home and not attend summer camp, those are the students who will be physically retained in third grade. So there is a choice, but with that choice comes the child will stay and repeat third grade the following year.
Okay. But now, if they do go to the summer camp, and then they are reading at grade level by the end of that, then they can, I guess, apply before November 1st for the, to be promoted on into the fourth grade. It has to be done before November 1st, I understand.
Yes, and they don't have to apply. What we'll do at the end of summer camp is we'll give that assessment again, and then if the child is proficient, they'll move on to fourth grade, and they won't have that label. So we'll automatically remove that at the end of summer camp, and then we'll be looking again between then and November 1st for any other students who have demonstrated proficiency, and they will also have that label removed.
Yeah. Well, I definitely think it's a positive step in the right direction, and so accountability and implementation and all of that, of course, is going to play a role in the outcome, but we'll just have to sort of monitor it and see how it goes. And I'm sure it'll take us a while to get everything down like it's supposed to be, but I'm sure, though, with the quality of people that we have in Cooperris County Schools, that we'll see a very positive outcome out of this. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Schuh. Mr. Schumacher, do you have any comments?
I have a bunch of questions. In the beginning, you said that there were, there are basically two assessments each year, starting in kindergarten. Is that starting, does that start in kindergarten, or do we start that in the first grade?
So are you talking about this kindergarten entry assessment piece? That is a kindergarten entry assessment. So right now, we already do that for kids before we register them. So it's a quick assessment of, do they know their letters? Do they know their numbers? How do they hold a pencil? Those types of skills. So this will be a state-level entry assessment. So that will be given starting in kindergarten.
And then at the end of kindergarten, there'll be an assessment?
Yes. They'll do this entry assessment, and then they have a mid-year assessment and an end-of-the-year assessment under the component here that talks about the early reading grade proficiency. So those Reading 3D assessments come in at the middle of the year and end of the year for kindergarten as well.
Okay. And so all the grades up through third grade have these three assessments, beginning, middle, and the end-of-the-year assessments?
That is correct.
If the child's, of course, he's got a personal education plan or PEP, whatever you call it. If the child's not being successful anytime before third grade, how are we going to handle that? Because obviously, you don't want to keep moving them forward, so is there opportunity to hold them back or to begin some remediation earlier than just third grade and waiting for that big ax to fall?
So our teachers are giving those assessments three times a year. They give one at the beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year. After the beginning-of-the-year assessments, K-3, we have data meetings where the teachers look at all of those results, and they look for students who need additional support. And we put interventions in place. And that's a practice that we were doing prior to this legislation. So if we look at all of the first grade results at the beginning-of-the-year assessment, and we see that there are 10 students in first grade who are struggling in reading, then we put interventions in place to provide them with additional support. So that might be working with another teacher for an additional 30 minutes. That might be changing what is happening in their guided reading group. So we are doing things proactively, K-3, so that hopefully by the time they get there, then first, there are no surprises in terms of who these students might be, and second, that we've done some things to address their needs prior to then.
And that process is going on even now?
Yes.
Okay, so we're doing that right now?
Yes.
When we get to the, to the teachers that are going to be involved with the summer camp, will those teachers be 12-month employees?
I'm looking to Kathy. They won't be 12-month employees. Yeah, no, the answer is no, but I was looking to try to expand on that a bit more for you.
So they won't be 12, but they'll probably be 11?
Are they contract?
Because you've got eight weeks.
They'll be contract employees.
Okay.
Right. They receive a, they receive a separate contract for the number of weeks, and then they actually also earn leave during that period of time as well.
Race for the Top is mentioned in this, and you talked about the Race for the Top Early Learning Challenge Grant. Do we have that grant in our hands? Or is that a grant we've applied for, we may or may not get?
That is a state-level grant that the state received.
All right. And how do we apply for funds in that grant? Or is that just allocated based on the ADM?
That's provided to the state so that they can do the components of developing this particular assessment. So the grant funds went to the state level, and then they use it to do the activities that are listed here. So we don't see that money.
All right. So the Race for the Top grant has nothing to do with the local area. It's just the outputs that the state sends down to us, the tests and assessments that we get. All right. EVOs doesn't come available really or effective for parents until the third grade. Is that correct? Do I understand that? Or is there an earlier, fourth grade?
Well, this year till fourth grade, next year, third graders will have it too, because they have the beginning-of-grade, third-grade test now.
And EVOs would be the big component. Can you come, Mike, to the microphone, please? And EVOs is the component that allows the parents to have information about the progress of their children. And that really doesn't start until the third grade or fourth grade this year, third grade next year?
Yes.
All right. Now, will the parents know where their children stand? Because, you know, we, we used to have the P, the, I guess, when school, the new school program came out, I can't remember the name of it, the one that you've been trying to implement. There's a component in it, the parents can actually look at the progress of their students, of their children.
You're talking Power School?
Power School, that's the one, yeah.
So Power School allows parents to access student grades. So a parent can go on there and see how their children are doing in the coursework that they're taking throughout the year. It's not going to include EVOs information or EOG or EOC data. So it's different information that they get.
All right. Now, here's the bigger question. You're collecting all this data on all these children. You've got these PEPs. You know, you only have 30,000 of them, but you're going to have a lot, and they'll just be growing every year. Where is this data housed? Who has access to it?
You want to talk about your data, and then I'll switch.
So the Reading 3D data and things that we're collecting for those benchmarks and the progress monitoring assessments are all housed with the M-class system. So it's a web-based system, and all of the students' historical data is tracked within that. So students who are first graders now, when they're in third grade, will still have all of their data on that web-based system.
And that's a state system?
Mm-hmm. It is.
And I guess it has its levels of security in it. Does anyone else have access to that state database except the state?
Well, it's, let me clarify, it's not a state database. It is a product that the state has purchased. So it's being used in states outside of North Carolina. So it's very similar to an AIMS Web or any other data collection assessment tool that multiple districts are using. So it has all of the security pieces to it that any of those other systems would have.
But we would have access to that data.
I'm just not worried about what you have access to. I'm worried who else has access to our children's data that we don't have, we don't have knowledge of. And I wonder if that's a question you could ask those, the folks that you deal with up into the state level to find out who does have access, since it's floating around in the cloud somewhere. That's just a big concern. Because one of the big comments that I've been hearing is that there's this federal registry of all of our children's data, and it's out there. And if this company is doing other states, then that kind of reinforces that belief or that comment, that our children all rely, reside on a huge registry, and this data can be used in different ways.
I'm sure Tara can probably respond more to that. But it is secure in terms of rights are provided to users based on their level of access that they should be granted.
All right. My last question, then I'll move, let everyone else speak. Covering, covering the risk beyond the third grade. All right. We've gotten to third grade. We've mitigated this child. The student is now successfully in the fourth grade. What's next? Do we, do we have interventions? Are we set up to continue to make this child successful? And is that just our policy, and the state basically statute stops here, and then the rest is up to us from, from grade three on up?
So the state statute piece does really stop at the fourth grade level. The process that I talked about earlier, where we're looking at the data, we're looking for students who need additional support, we're doing that at least K-5. We're also doing it, I know, at middle schools as we look at different classes. Jason can talk to you a little bit more about that. But we have structures and systems in place to talk about and to support students with the interventions that they need. So it, again, that same example that I gave with first grade might be something that we're doing in fourth grade, where we have a small group of students who need additional support, and we have teachers who pull them for that additional help, or the classroom teacher is provided with some additional professional development and some additional strategies to help support those students. So while the legislative components here stop, of course, we want to continue to meet the needs of students who may be struggling.
All right. My last one. How does this work with the grading component of our schools? Do you, have you got any clear understanding how our schools are going to get graded with all of this other intervention brought in, where we're trying to help children get, you know, that are at risk to, you know, get skills that, you know, they were unfortunately not allowed to have before they got into school, and now we're trying to get them caught up? But yet, we've got this grading component that's going to be hanging over top of all of our schools, especially at this level. How's, have you figured out how they work together? Or is there a working, you know, you know, help me out? Or have you thought about that?
There hasn't been anything said that takes the Read to Achieve legislation and marries it with the school grading system. And we haven't seen any pieces that relate those two at all, unless Matthew's heard something that I haven't.
The grading system is just the grading system, and it'll be based, you know, at the elementary level is probably the most simple. It'll be based on essentially the proficiency and a little bit of sort of extra credit for growth. And it's not married or tied to this legislation at all. It's just based on performance on, in the grade assessment.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to know more about the grading system, so one day we could maybe talk about that. Thank you.
If I can say one more thing about the grading system.
Sure.
We are looking at the state's business rules around the grading system and developing a model or an example of what we would predict it would be. And when we have that ready, we can always present it to the board.
Right. That would be, that would be beneficial. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes. Now, this said 13, 14 year. When was this legislation actually supposed to go into effect?
The legislation went into effect in August.
In August of this year?
Yes.
So it's in effect now?
Yes, it is.
Is that correct? So do we have actual numbers? Because you had said you were looking at transportation. Do we know what our numbers are now of our children that have not met this, I mean, that are at this number right now?
So we're looking at different data points to try to help us narrow that number. We looked at the third grade students from last year and what our proficiency rates were on EOGs from last year. Obviously, that's a different cohort of children, so it's difficult to get a feel from that data. So the other piece of data that we're using are our Discovery Education assessments that we give three times a year that mimic the EOG pretty closely. So we're looking at that data. We give that in August. We'll give it again late January, early February, so that we have that data to look at to try to get a more clear picture of the percentage... to get a more clear picture of the percentage of students that we're talking about.
So, you have no idea what that number is? I mean, you know, that reading, y'all know, this is one of my boogie beers, that, you know, reading is our key essential. We can't do anything if we can't read. And so, you know, this is something that's really near and dear to my heart. And, you know, y'all had supplied me with a lot of different numbers. So, that's why I was wondering if we did know, how many children are we looking at right now? Do we have any idea?
We're looking somewhere probably between 40 to 45 percent. It's going to depend on what this Read to Achieve assessment really looks like. But if we look at our Discovery Ed data and we look at our EOG data from last year with the raising of the standards, right? So, we've raised the standards. If we look at that information, we're probably looking at about 40 to 45 percent of students across the county.
Is that of our third graders?
Yes.
Okay. So, total population of our third graders?
Yes.
Not of our total population of our students, then?
Correct.
So, that would be of our third graders we're looking at. So, we're looking at almost half, then? You think of our third graders that are not reading at grade level now?
According to these two assessment measures.
Okay. And so, we would, and you would say that we would have to mediate in some form, either them going to that camp or some form of mediation, to see if they would have to go through one of these things to see if they would need to fall into one of these categories. In other words, see if they would maybe be exempt, or they would have to go to camp. You're saying we need to assess them, you're saying, basically. So, we're not sure where they would fit right now?
Yes.
Is what you're saying. Okay. I think that may be my only question at this point. When do you think we would have those totals, you think?
Well, we'll continue to give the Discovery Education benchmarks, so we'll have more current numbers about the end of January. We won't have the EOG proficiency results until late May, early June. Or is it all in June? Somewhere late May, early June. And then, they'll take the EOG, and then the students who are not proficient and don't meet those good cause exemptions, we'll give them the Read to Achieve alternate assessment. And then, we'll know exactly the students.
And I had the same question as Mr. Schumaker had. You know, we can't forget these children after just the third grade. And that was my question. What's going to happen to them after the fourth grade? Because, you know, if they've got a problem, that problem's not going to go away. If they've got a problem, we've got to stay on it. And you answered that, that we are going to stay with them. So, that was my other question.
We know that summer camp and summer school is a solid intervention. So, while there are some difficulties in terms of funding and other things, I think that that does provide additional support to students who need it. And so, I think we will see some gains as we have students for six weeks in the summer to help support that. So, I mean, we do know that that is a solid intervention for students.
Okay. And then, you said the teachers that we'd be using for the summer camp, will these be teachers, or will this give us the opportunity also maybe to bring back some of our teacher assistance? Or what would we, what would we do with this? Or do we have any idea?
There are requirements that they be certified teachers who have shown and demonstrated proficiency in reading instruction. So, we will be looking at classroom teachers. We can look K-12 and look for teachers, but they will be certified classroom teachers.
Okay. All right. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Walter?
I guess that 48 or 45 percent is a lot. I mean, that's, that's over 1,000 kids. But then again, the EOGs, they didn't get a retest this past year, so they will have the option to retest, so that should drop that number a little bit as well. And then, you said the law is in effect now. Have we already notified parents in the third grade that they have this potential? Their kid is not?
We notified parents at the end of last year for all of our second-grade families. So, all of our second-grade families were notified that this legislation was going into effect, so they know that this is a possibility. We're currently collecting our data. We have some things on the website that just speak in generalities around this legislation. We will be providing letters to families in January. So, the families who have, or the parents who have children who are at risk have already had their PEPs, they've had the parent notifications that go with the PEP component of this, that personalized education plan. In January, we will be sending letters and having probably parent conferences with those parents to talk to specific parents about their children. So, that will happen in January.
But none of these kids have taken an EOG before, so this will be, this is a new test for them. And they have to get a three or a four in order to, if they get a two or a one, that would be not proficient.
Correct.
Yeah, that's just, that's just a lot of kids. It raises a big issue if you're retaining that many students, and you're going to have a dip. And that's going to affect us down the line on class sizes and can really affect the school. So, again, I'm with these folks, that a lot of this is unfunded mandates. It's a lot of burdens on, you know, administration, teachers, facilities, and parents. And as we read in the paper, you know, last week, we have some teachers that were picketing, saying, hey, you know, you're making us assess these kids all the time. You're not giving them any time to teach, and this seems to be just making this worse. So, I guess that's just a comment on my part. Thanks for the presentation. We really, really make it clear to our third-grade parents that this is an issue.
And much of what you said, we completely agree with. But just one point of clarification, the third graders this year did take the Beginning of Grade test. So, they've had some experience and exposure, if you will, to a standardized assessment, for what it's worth.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. I don't really have much to add to all the questions that have been asked. One quick one. Where is the camp or where are the camps? I assume there's more than one, they're not all going to the same place?
So, we are going to continue to monitor the numbers to try to make decisions on the sites for the summer camps. We're also looking at the percentage of students at particular schools. So, we might divide the county into quadrants and have them, but we're still in that planning stage as we work on the numbers. But they will be at our elementary schools in the county.
Then, obviously, Mr. Whitkey and his crew need to know where students are going to be, and that's not an item we're budgeted for either. So, you know, it's, I guess, the intent of what they're trying to do, I guess I get that. You know, we're trying to set the bar and say, look, having people not read it is unacceptable. Trying to get there, it looks like we may have a gap or two, and we may have an unintended consequence, but we'll just, you know, we'll deal with that when the time comes. My fervent hope is that we do a terrific job in the early years, so that by the time we get to that third-grade test, hey, it's no problem for us, and then we just keep on moving. So, that's what we'll, that's what we'll strive for. So, with that, we're going to move on. Yes, Dr. Shepherd's got a question?
Just a question. Dr. Natrius, you presented this tonight, I thought, without opinion. You presented the facts. But I would like to ask your opinion on the comment that Mr. Walter made about the amount of assessment that this is requiring of our teachers. I would hate for a teacher to watch this meeting without that voice being represented from someone who is responsible for carrying this out. So, you are free to speak, okay?
I was trying to avoid that. This was a very factual presentation. So, there are components to this legislation, such as summer camp, that I've already spoken about, that we know are very solid interventions. I do think that there are some components of this when we look at the assessment pieces that are in conflict with what we want to be doing in our classrooms. And I think the pieces that are competing with one another, when you look at the progress monitoring requirements and you look at portfolio requirements that are having our teachers assess a great deal, we are losing our instructional time. So, what we are trying to do is, we roll out this legislation, is to look at, how can we do this in a way that is least disruptive to our instructional time and really use the assessments that are being provided to guide our instruction? So, that's the work that we're doing.
And so, I would just like to say that you're a good soldier. You're following exactly what the state asks you to do. But I would also say that we have a responsibility in education, as I told our principals this summer, to be brave warriors and fight for what we know is best for children, and to try to find ways to adapt the requirements, to do what's best for children and not carry them out to the letter of the law, but make sure that we're doing it within the spirit of the law. Mark is grinning right now. Be a brave warrior. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. Tara, thank you very much for your presentation. And we'll look forward, I guess, for some data further down the line. Before we move to Section 5, our commissioner liaison is here. I'd like to welcome Mr. Jason Osterreit. Welcome. Glad to see you. And we will go on to number, Section 5, with 5.01, a budget amendment, and welcome Kelly Klutz to the podium.
Good afternoon again. We'll start with our state budget amendments. At the top of that document, we have a reclass, and I would just like to explain that just a little bit. We found ourselves in a situation where we had a vacancy last year in federal funds, and so, we had additional dollars that we needed to spend in federal funds. So, to maximize our dollars, we spent the federal funds on salary, so that freed up our state funds. And so, we moved everything around so that we were maximizing our dollars, and we were able to spend the dollars that you see here on supplies and materials that we desperately needed. So, it just took a little bit of moving around, and that's why you see that reclass there. And it all stemmed from a vacancy that we had in our federal dollars. The additional budget amendments on the state are just adds, and those are normal additions that you're used to seeing, reimbursement for subs, fines and forfeitures for technology, the mid-year transportation allotment that I've talked about. Now, the digital learning is new this year. That was passed in the budget legislation, and we're just getting that allocation. So, it was passed in the budget for this fiscal year. We're just getting that allocation. That's going to, those dollars are going to sit there. There's a specific purpose for those dollars, but we're also applying, you can apply for a grant for additional dollars to put with that and use that for digital learning. So, we're going to go through that process and apply for that grant. And then, of course, we have some CTE dollars, Career Technical Education for Student Certifications. Okay? So, are there any questions on the state budget amendment?
Now, Lynn, I'm going to have to learn how to operate the microphone here all over again. Very quickly, the digital learning, I guess I've just, I know what the, I know what virtual is, but just tell me real quick what the digital piece is.
I'm going to let Kelly or Jason explain that one to you.
This is money that's come down from the state that has two purposes. You can use it to buy digital content, and then they also expect you to train your teachers on utilizing that digital content. It does not mean necessarily e-tech books, although you could go in that direction. It's defined rather broadly that you would be able to purchase multiple sources of digital content to be used for learning. But there is a training component. The grant for which we're applying is $7 times our ADM, and we are going to partner with Conaplus and going for that grant. They made it quite clear that if you went in with another LEA for digital learning content as well as training, that you'd have a better chance. So, we're very excited about that partnership with Conaplus.
Fantastic. So, it sounds like there's some discretion there that we get to, it's not so narrowly defined. Okay, fantastic. Any comments on the first page? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So, we'll move on to federal. And again, these are all allocations, all except for one minor reclass, and that was due to indirect cost rate varying a little bit, and so, we adjust those as those comes down, those come down. The federal grants are very specific to the program area. You'll see some exceptional children programs, and also, you'll see some preschool programs in there. So, all of those are increases to the budget. Do we have any questions about those federal programs? So, we'll move on to capital. The top budget amendment is the $65,000 that we've talked about significantly, and we're just, what happened with those dollars, those were the portrait home dollars that we talked about last year significantly, because we didn't spend or allocate that, those dollars, they rolled into fund balance. Now, we wanted to appropriate that $65,000 specifically for the Central Cabarrus Project. So, now, we're bringing it to you so that we can put that in a line item that you approved last month. And then, the next reallocation is just the QSCB that we talked to you about in the budget presentation earlier. The last budget amendment is a contribution that we received for Patriots Elementary Program, and it's from the Vanderbilt family and the Vanderbilt employer. Oh, sorry. I'm so sorry. Vandergrifts.
Well, we got something if we're getting money from the Vanderbilts.
That's what I was thinking, was money. The Vandergrifts would not appreciate that. Employer will match this, and so, eventually, we'll get $6,000. You'll see the other $3,000 coming to us. And we, if it's, the grant's over $5,000, we record it here. If it's less than $3,000, $5,000, we allow it to go to the school. So, that's why you're seeing it here. Okay? Questions about that?
Board members, any questions about the budget amendments? Okay, hearing none. Consent? Consent? Okay. We will put that on the consent agenda. All right. Next up, excuse me, will be the salary, 5.02, Salary Supplement Increase Request, and this discussion will be led by Dr. Shepherd.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Though you adopt a budget earlier in the year, our financial picture becomes much clearer in October and November. And, for example, we've studied the impact of charter schools, and we've, we're predicting to have 30,600 students in our district and lose 600 of those students to charter schools and then to have approximately 30,000 students in our district. But instead, we have 30,113, so that means more funding coming to our district. We also presented our audit results to you last month, and it revealed that we have a healthy financial picture for our enterprise funds, such as Kids Plus and Child Nutrition. So, because we're in a better financial position than we thought earlier, I'm proposing to you tonight that we look at a three-part salary supplement increase for Cabarrus County Schools employees. And those three parts would include, first, increasing the supplement of 2,000, or, excuse me, the salary of 260 non-certified staff members who are currently paid below the minimum range, as identified by our salary study, and increase them to the minimum within that range. So, we're talking about 260 employees that would receive only the amount of money to bring them to what we think is the least that anyone should be paid to carry out that work. We have money in our enterprise funds and that we have received to cover that cost. The other two pieces, though, would be a request of funds to the county commissioners to increase all non-certified an additional 1 percent. And we'll give you more detail on that in a moment. The third piece of this request is to request additional funds from the Cabarrus County Commissioners to increase the supplement of all Cabarrus County Schools certified staff by 1 percent of their total salary. And so, we bring to you tonight a resolution for staff compensation, and I'd like to read that to you now, and then we'll answer any questions you might have and allow our chief financial officer to give more clarification on the dollar figures that I've referred to. So, tonight, we bring to you, whereas performance expectations for Cabarrus County Schools employees have never been higher, whereas funding cuts and freezes left school employees without any pay increase between 2008 and 2011, whereas between 2008 and 2013, the cost of living has increased 9.7 percent. Whereas although the state provided a 1.2 percent increase for 2012, 2013, and I see a typo there, no increase was provided for 2013, 2014. Whereas it is necessary to provide fair and competitive wages to school employees in order to maintain excellent public schools in Cabarrus County. And whereas employees of Cabarrus County who do not work in the school system received a 1.5 percent cost of living increase this fiscal year and reinstated merit pay for exemplary job performance. Now, therefore, the Cabarrus County Board of Education unanimously resolves to request the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners to provide $1,957,000 in operating funds so that all school employees can receive a 1 percent salary increase. So, I bring that to you tonight with your consideration, and I would... So I bring that to you tonight with your consideration, and I would put this up for questions or other comments from our financial officer.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. And we will have questions and comments, and we will start with Mr. Walter.
Thanks. You know, I think bringing our staff up to the minimum is kind of a no-brainer, and I think we certainly do that at all, you know, do that tonight if we can. I had a couple of questions here about, the explanation doesn't seem to match up terribly well with the resolution that we've got presented, or at least it's not easily understood. We're talking about a 1 and 1/2 percent increase that the county got, yet we're only asking for a 1 percent. Can you explain why that is?
I think 1 percent was what we had hoped to receive in our original budget request this summer, and so we're going back to that original request rather than trying to match dollar for dollar. I would be more than welcome to ask for a 1 and 1/2 percent increase if that is the will of the Board of Education.
It just seems confusing that we've got this thing, we've got the whereas clauses are talking, give ample reasons why we'd like to see an increase, but then we have, it's just not clear to me in here in this resolution that we're presenting that we're asking for an increase in the supplement for the teachers. And I understand that's because that's all we have, all we have control over is the supplement itself. So I don't think the resolution is very clear on what we're asking for. If we're asking for a 1 percent salary increase, I think it ought to kind of state how it is in the explanation, how you described it earlier, to make it a little more clear.
All right, let me, I can try to address that issue. As you know, the state sets teacher salary, and then there's a local supplement on top of that. The state has not given any raise for teachers or other staff this year. So I think what this resolution asks for is to increase the local dollar so that everyone gets a 1 percent increase. That money will be part of the local supplement. In other words, we can't change the state salary, but if you had a teacher that was making $40,000 on the state salary, if we're asking for a 1 percent increase, that would be an additional $400 for that teacher. You could say supplement, I didn't, in trying to draft this, I didn't reference it because I want to make it clear, we're not asking for 1 percent more of the supplement. The supplement, for example, on that $40,000 teacher may be $4,000 or $2,000, so we're not looking for 1 percent more of the supplement.
And we've already made that adjustment, didn't we?
We did 1.5.
We did.
They have provided a 1 percent increase in the supplement, so I think.
1.5. Was that not correct?
On average, it ended up being $33 per teacher a year.
Carolyn, please key up.
Okay, yeah, because there was, it was, that was the only thing that was given, was 1.5 for certified during the budget time, because that was one of my problems that I had with the budget. Everybody knows that was a problem I had, because our non-certified got nothing. And that was where I had a problem with the budget.
Yeah, I think, again, if we just make it a little more clear on what exactly we want to do with this money, I think would be helpful. But to remain competitive and do what we see with teacher morale, I think we should do everything we can to help our teachers and our staff.
So you just want the language cleaned up a little bit to be a little more clear? Is that, Mark?
I'd like to see it more clear and understand it, because if you just read this, it doesn't really convey what we're trying to do.
Do you want to just wait and kind of get everybody's comments and then try to see where we are with, okay.
Can I just add one thing? Mr. Walter, one of the reasons that he did it the way that he did is because we have both, we're asking for an increase of 1 percent on non-certified and certified. So we're combining the classes.
So in other words, we're asking the county commissioner to give us this money, and we'll allocate it, we'll allocate, take it from there and allocate it.
Well, if you want to say specifically 1 percent of teacher supplements, then we're also going to need to have a different language for 1 percent of non-certified salaries.
Yeah, I just think it ought to be clear that, what we're doing.
And we can do that.
Well, for whatever it's worth, Mr. Walter, what she's saying, 1 percent's 1 percent, and it's just across the board, because the non-certified, see, they don't get a supplement. They didn't get anything. Whereas the ones that's already getting supplements will get 1 percent as well. So it's 1 percent regardless across the board, is what we're asking for. I don't see a reason for it to be distinguished, in my opinion, but...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schu. I tell you what, we'll listen to Ms. Carpenter and the rest of us down the line and then kind of see where we are. And if, you know, if the board thinks it's clear, we'll go from there. But we'll try to make it as clear as we possibly can so everybody knows exactly what we're trying to accomplish. Ms. Carpenter?